Well, good evening, everyone. I want to begin introductions we will give. I see folks are still coming in at a pretty good pace here. We'll give a couple more minutes for folks to come in before we start with the meat of our presentation tonight. But I will begin with some introductions of what we're here for tonight to talk about Placer County's first ever Park and Trail Master Plan, to reintroduce it after it has kind of paused for about a year and a half while we worked through particularly the Hidden Falls Regional Park Project, because it was a, it was a big item within our, within our future plans. And so now we want to give folks a chance to relook at the plan. We have issued a new draft that you can find at PlacerParksPlan.com and give folks another 30 days to take a look, to make some comments. And tonight, let me just introduce the, the format of the meeting. We have set aside about 45 minutes to present on the plan itself, to go over the details, what things have changed, what's not changed, remind you of some of the big ideas that have come out of this plan and the planning process that's gone on for the last four years. And then leave about 45 minutes for folks to make comments and answer questions, and I'll go in in a moment to, to explain to you how that will happen. Let me introduce myself, Andy Fisher, with Placer County Parks, County Parks Administrator. We have Lisa Carnahan with us tonight, who will be monitoring questions and chat as it comes in. Lisa's our Senior Park Planner. Stephanie Grigsby with Design Workshop is going to be presenting along with me tonight. And Brian, Ben Fish, also with Design Workshop, will be teaming up with Lisa on the chat line. So let me explain to you, as we go through the meeting, the Q and A button at the bottom of your screen, you can click on, and there will be a running chat going on. You are welcome to ask questions as you will. And Lisa and Ben are going to be helping us to kind of dissect those questions into different categories. So if it's a very localized question to a particular issue in your neighborhood or something like that, we may just get back to you and say, here's a contact information, let's have a sidebar conversation. If it is generally applicable, if it pertains to the plan, certainly if it's about clarification of things we've seen earlier, things like that, those are the kind of ones that we want to bring up at the end of the meeting and, and try to answer those. We'll also be able to stay on for, kind of as long as questions come in after the meeting. And then we're going to be able to have a record of that chat string going forward. So we'll be able to do follow-ups, things like that, give you all the information that you need to get to the plan to take a look at it. And with that, Stephanie, did I, did I, do you think I forgot anything by way of introduction? If not, let me turn it over to you to talk about some of the big ideas.
Absolutely. No, I think you did. You set us up well. And, and thanks again, everybody, for your participation this evening. I know everybody is busy and especially with great weather, it's nice to be outside. So thanks for taking some time this evening and joining us, as Andy said, to relook at the, at the master plan and, and think about what the, what your comments are and being able to, to provide some feedback. So again, as I'm Stephanie Grigsby, a Principal with Design Workshop, as part of this plan, it's not, it was not just Design Workshop. We were part of a team of consultants, two of the primary consult, team members, Proz Consulting, who really does parks and recreation plans nationwide. They really dive into the strategic planning piece and programming elements and worked with the, the county to think through mission, vision statements, and really thinking about, you know, where we set ourselves up for, for the next 20 years, really. And then also joining our team was SandTech Consulting as well, a great firm that has built projects, parks and trails in, in the region and especially in Placer County. So as we think about a master plan, the purpose of a master plan is really to provide a blueprint for the county. It's a blueprint to grow and adapt your parks and trail system throughout the year. So it's a 20-year plan, so thinking, you know, big picture, what we want to achieve, but then also thinking about the tactical day-to-day about how you get there too. So when we think about the guiding plan, it's really, it's really important for us to have a clear vision of where we want to head and why the, why the department exists or the division exists, going to become a department. And then, so that's, that's the purpose of really creating a mission and vision statement. And the plan also has a set of values of how the, the division operates to be able to achieve that vision. But really thinking broadly again about, you know, what is an inspirational mission, miss, mission and vision for the county as it thinks about how we provide parks, trails and, and open space? And when we took a look at the current vision, it was really effective in terms of being practical. So if you look at it, it's to provide construction, operation and maintenance of Placer County's parks, beaches and open space, landscape grounds, recreational trails for the use and enjoyment of residents and guests of Placer County. And, and as we think about, you know, moving forward to the next 20 years, we wanted to, you know, think a little bit broader and, and really have that inspiration of, you know, what is the why? What, what, what is it about? And what is the, what is the, the driving and striving, what are we really striving for as an organization? And that, and that led to a proposed mission, which is Placer County enriches lives by connecting people to outdoor recreation and by enhancing access to our natural resources. And then what we're striving to be is to be a leader in providing memorable outdoor experiences for generations to come. So letting that really provide that framework for, for the how and the, and the why. As we develop a master plan, it's, it's really about reflecting the needs of a community and really needing to be specific to each place and people. And so that's where we really marry both technical content with community input. And, and as Andy said, even though we've put a pause on the plan as, as the Hidden Falls Regional Park Project came to completion, you know, we really wanted to make sure we were, are reflecting community input, which is why we're coming back to you today to have another look at the plan, allow you the time to provide input, and then think about how that can, can be married in. So on the community input side, we started with focus group meetings. Those focus group meetings were held both in the western part of the county and in the eastern part. We held, we conducted surveys, held stake, again, sort of, again, stakeholder meetings, and then met with the, the MACs or the Municipal Advisory Council, conducted staff interviews, met at presentations at Park Commission meetings, and then also the Board of Supervisor meetings. So really layering the opportunities for inputs and trying to make sure that we were listening. And then that marries up with the technical side. So in tandem with that, we were conducting inventory and site assessments, doing mapping. So one of the, one of the big elements of the plan was to gain all of the trails mapped from throughout the county, throughout from all of our stakeholders. That includes, you know, state parks, it includes Forest Service, the districts, the schools, nonprofits, really all of the mapping that was available to be able to be in one central place for us to then use as a driving force to be able to drive some of the, the plan recommendations. And at this point, as we've sort of hit that pause and are now relooking at the, at the master plan, the, the plan, the draft plan that is available for review, know that we are diving into that because as we put a pause, that was, as Andy said, a year and a half ago. So there have been some great things that have, that have occurred, that we are actually looking to make sure that all of the new trails that have been built, park improvements, that all of those numbers are updated and that we make sure to, to really make it as current as possible, so updating the demographics and really bringing it up to the most current state. So as we look forward to the next 20 years, we have a great starting place as well. As part of the technical content too, one of the key elements was doing benchmark data. So we evaluated nine different communities, nine other communities that ranged from counties, recreation districts that were in California that were of similar size, maybe had similar types of facilities or landscape, different trail components, both what they had existing and then also maybe what the county aspires to be too, seeing what their components were, what their mix of uses were, and their, their level of surface. So that, that way we had something to compare against as well, to understand what the trends are and what we really want to be able to say are grounded and really thorough recommendations for the county as we look forward. Thinking about the, the input, I, I think that this slide really shows the level of interest in developing a countywide Parks and Trails Master Plan. As we initiated surveys, we had, you know, over 2,400 surveys that were completed. 3,000, 3,000 were started and almost completed. So we were able to glean a lot of information from that feedback. Again, a number of different focus groups, 60 organizations attended or participated as part of those. And then to date, more than 32 map presentations, and anticipate that to increase again as we go back out to, to the communities and ask for additional input on, on the public draft of the master plan. So thinking through our technical assessments, as we conducted the, the analysis and really dove into the current inventory of parks and trails and open space, a number of both challenges and then needs sort of rose to the top as part of, as part of that assessment and as part of our conversations with you. And those are listed here in, in short form, but really what a couple of the things were the, the need to address major maintenance and rehabilitation. So when I say major maintenance, that's really about, you know, facilities over time, they have a lifespan. And so thinking about what those capital maintenance improvements are and being able to make sure that we're planning for those in the future and setting aside the funding dollars to upgrade our existing inventory of parks and trails and doing those, those large capital projects. One of the other items that sort of rose to the top was that there's a lack of user recognition of the county's parks systems and trail systems, about what the party, the county actually provides. So considering the opportunities for wayfinding and really enhancing the recognition of, of the park system as it is. As many of you know, parking and access to some of the facilities can be challenging at times. This is particularly evident at the Lake Tahoe beaches and then especially Hidden Falls Regional Park and some of the, some of the trails and winter access areas, especially in eastern Placer County. So understanding what those challenges are and then thinking about how we might be able to address those. There's also, one of the other challenges is that as you have a county and you have a number of smaller parks, a number of smaller parks reduces its maintenance efficiency, it drives up the, the cost as, as it spreads out staff's ability to have to drive to different remote parks to be able to maintain them. So thinking about opportunities to consolidate, but then also the need for individual communities to still have access, access to those facilities too. So weighing the, the checks and balances there, just to make sure we have the right mix. It also is apparent that the needs and desires really vary throughout the county. So within western Placer County, much more of a desire for sports fields and some of those really active park needs. And then in eastern Placer County, still those needs for traditional park facilities and, and, and those resources, but also an increased desire to think about year-round opportunities. So four-season parks access and then also trails access as well. As I mentioned, there was no central location for trails mapping, so that was one of the intense efforts for this project. And then looking at where barriers to, to trail connectivity existed within I-80 and then also the rail corridor. So that leads to a series of needs as well, in terms of thinking about how those, them can also lead to those opportunities. So again, really thinking about the need for a connected trail system, that means those paved and unpaved trails, the need for branding and wayfinding, and then also consolidated mapping and mapping that can be easily updated and really ties to the mapping that's there and used by other partner agencies and partner groups. A need for sports fields, specifically for Loomis Basin and Granite Bay. And again, this idea for flexibility in the county standards. So county parks systems, when you think about planning for them, they're planned using level of service. So the current county standard is five acres of active park per thousand residents and then five acres of open space or passive recreation parks per thousand residents. And so those needs really vary between different communities. So building in ideas and, and opportunities for the county to talk to residents and understand what the needs are for the local areas and then adapt the standards as needed to be able to provide the, the right mix for the, for each community. So in some communities, that might look more like access to trails or access to trailheads and open space lands. And in some places, that might look, look like more sports fields and some of the more active recreation facilities. One of the other needs is the need for shade, especially in the western portion of the county, to again, be able to provide the trail system, but then also provide the amenities and the comfort that is, is desired in terms of being able to get out and, and actually recreate and enjoy those facilities. To have a volunteer program and to have staffing and funding support to address maintenance and be able to also support a volunteer program. The leadership needed to facilitate the completion of trail projects, accessible play facilities. This is one of those great opportunities of, you know, new play, play equipment comes available and especially accessible play facilities, to be able to incorporate them as part of the upgrades and improvements to park areas. To, to look for opportunities for having larger, more centralized parks. And then also thinking about indoor recreation facility opportunities, especially in the Lake Tahoe region. So then he said, I'm, I'm sort of, I'm sharing the big ideas portion of, of the meeting. And then Andy will dive into a lot of the specific projects. So some of the, the little dots that you see on the map here, he'll go into a little bit more specifics too. But this, this map really represents some of the high priority or what we're calling tier one, tier two project improvements. The sort of purplish color represents those tier one projects that are currently funded or actively being planned. And then tier two is represented in, in the blue, blue color. But at a whole, when you think about, you know, sort of pulling back and looking at the system from that 10,000-foot level or that big picture view, really it's about how the, the overall system is growing over the next 20 years. And a lot of the active park growth will likely occur in tandem with development, specifically at Placer Vineyards and some of those other areas in western Placer County. And then within the remaining portion of the county, there are some growth areas, but then there's also areas of improvement. So you're seeing North Tahoe Regional Park improvements, Skylandia Park improvements, Sheridan Park improvements, Dutch Flat and so forth. So really thinking broadly about, you know, where we're growing, but then where we're also providing capital maintenance dollars for improvements. The other big idea is really about trails. And this is really about creating that back, that backbone of trail systems and really providing the connectivity both across the county, so from east to west across the county, but then also within the region too. So how are we connecting to the trail system to the north and to the south and to those other systems? So on this map, the, the item in solid line, solid brown line really represents unpaved existing trails that are of those regional connection elements. You see the Western States Trail, Pacific Crest Trail. The solid black line represents existing paved trails, so existing class one separated shared use paths. So those are the, the trail systems that are separated from a roadway, 10, 12-foot wide trail systems, American River Bike Trails, an example, Dry Creek Greenway, the Tahoe Bike Trail, where we have a number of new projects that are being built around the Lake Tahoe region and specifically, you know, great opportunities to, to tie into those and to complete that, that bikeway system as well. In the dotted line, you see the proposed connections. So, and then the green solid lines are also unpaved trails. So the green dotted lines are the proposed regional unpaved trail connections. And then the dotted black lines are proposed paved trails connections. So you can really see what we're really trying to link up those systems. And again, connect across the county and really connect across and, you know, to our neighbors as well. A, a note here on this map as well is that the connections really are showing that we want to get from A to B. The precise routes for these would be developed as part of individual projects. So, you know, the specific exact location would be developed over time and provide another opportunity for community inputs and then also really, you know, dive into stakeholder input and, and specific conversations with, with individuals as well. So as part of the framework of the plan, this is, these are another series of elements that really has stayed consistent from the last plan that was presented. But there's a series of big ideas that are really implemented through principles. And those principles are organized in, in different categories. Within the parks, open spaces and beaches category, we have three principles, including allowing flexibility to respond to needs, to connect people to nature and to open space, to support recreation access to Lake Tahoe. So within the active, you know, allowing flexibility, that's what I referred to previously about, again, thinking about, you know, larger community scale park opportunities. And western Placer, western class, Placer and then an eastern Placer, you know, what are those specific facility needs? And then access to trails and, and recreation centers, you know, that are specific to those areas. When we think about connecting people to nature and open space, not all open space is the same. So the plan presents a series of categories of open space and thinking about passive recreation needs within there. So in some cases, open space might be a greenway, it might be connecting and have a trail. In other cases, it might really be habitat focused or conservation focused. And really identifying what that might be and the fact that when we think about a level of service for open space, that that, open space really provides many, many things. It provides just the separation and visual open space for, for the county and that quality of life and how we can make sure that we're maintaining that balance. For supporting recreation access to Lake Tahoe, that includes things such as signage, thinking about how we improve walking and biking connections to the lake, and then also coordinating with those other planning activities that are going on, to thinking about how we, how we manage recreation access to the lake as well and thinking about consistency at a regional level. And then also thinking about support facilities that are needed, such as restrooms. And then creating trails. So our big idea and our, our principle for trail, under the trails category is creating a connected trail system, which I spoke about previously. Within the programming and mapping category, the two principles are really about communicating the offerings and then activating public spaces. I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about activating public spaces in a minute. But when we, when we think about communication, again, that idea about being able to provide easy to find and easy to navigate information and that it's really always up to date, that we minimize duplication and that we also help to increase the recognition of Placer County's offerings. The other action item within this idea of communicating and, and providing, you know, organizing that information is to provide information on, on hours of, hours of use and rules of use. And then also thinking about reservation systems to again, help to improve just the overall experience. On funding and maintenance, the idea is really about developing partnerships. So those partnerships are ones that the county currently has, that we really want to develop and continue to develop to be able to deliver, deliver the amenities. The county really recognizes the opportunities that are had to be able to meet needs through partnerships. So through schools, through the recreation districts, through the public utility districts, states, state entities, and then both public and private entities, being able to think about those partnerships to be able to, to leverage them as much as possible and then not duplicate. In terms of maintaining facilities that comes with action items, again, to really address capital maintenance needs and then to reduce maintenance, maintenance expenses as well, thinking about opportunities to reduce those expenses through use of volunteers and really to formalize that program. Maximize funding includes diversifying financial strategies and then, then also really dedicating those funds that are needed for the capital improvement project. So I think as, as Andy walks through that program, thinking about that, you know, each of those projects really has a funding source and that we think about the private side through development and then also where we might be able to fund projects through grants and then also the general fund. But overall, really as part of, as part of the fiscal responsibility, makes, making sure we're maximizing our funding to the extent possible, that we're thinking about the long-term lifecycle costs of facilities. So as new projects come onboard, you know, maintenance is reviewing them, that we're also thinking about not just what the capital cost is, but what's that lifecycle replacement cost? So thinking about the end at the beginning can also help us maximize, maximize those dollars and put them to work. And then finally, measuring and tracking performance. And that really means that we're using data to, to make decisions in the future as well, that we're understanding how people are using the facilities, so we know where to invest the dollars to again, meet the needs of, of the communities and the county's residents. So there's five main initiatives. Out of all of those 10 principles and many, many action items, there's, there's five initiatives that are discussed in the plan that are really about helping people connect to the parks. So again, that mapping and communication, really formalizing a volunteer program and that coordination of the volunteers to help in, increase stewardship and, and that sense of ownership for our public land. Considering what art in public recreation areas might look like, the partnerships with providers to activate spaces and then developing those park standards as, as being able to make sure there's consistency through the parks because that's another way that people recognize and understand what the county is providing. And then finally, talking a little bit more about activation of public spaces. So, so when we talk about activation, you know, this is something that we're talking about for the county to complement and not duplicate. So complementing the traditional indoor programs that are offered by partners, such as cities, such as the recreation districts, the public utility districts and, and other providers, and not duplicating them. But really finding out, you know, what's that niche? What, what does the county provide as part of their land that really is part of their brand? That we can partner with others through, to be able to help deliver them on, on county property? So, you know, are there nature and environmental education opportunities? Potentially classes or safety classes to think about, you know, outdoor power tool safety, you know, how we, how we manage land, having hiking, hiking tours, biking and equestrian lessons, agricultural education and trail races. Really, again, those, those opportunities that can occur on public, on county land, but in partnership with other providers. And again, really thinking about what's the, what's the opportunity to activate those spaces and again, help the county, really help people connect to the, to the outdoors. And with that, I will turn it over to Andy to talk a little bit more about the specifics of the, the projects in the capital improvement plan.
Stephanie, thank you very much. And that's, yeah, so the second half of what we'll talk about tonight in the presentation is going to be focused around the projects, the capital improvement plan. I think people get most interested in these plans, what are you going to build, how are you going to do it, how are you going to manage it? And so that's, that's what I'll talk about from here. Do want to again, draw your attention to PlacerParksPlan.com where all of these maps are located. You can view the plan, you can view blowups of the, the maps within your own area. I was just about to pause for a minute to see if our Q and A was actually working, but I do see that a question came in. I'd like to welcome folks to get on that Q and A, queue up your questions for us. We'll be kind of filtering and looking through those now. The first question that came in, came in is a good one. We will address that one. But I'll talk about the projects and different categories of projects because the plan categorizes projects in these same categories. So the first is capital improvements for property that we already have, for, for parks that we already have. What do we want to do to improve the property that we already have? And the second are new projects and new property. And we've divided those into what we call tier one and tier two improvements. And that, the terms for tier one and the definitions of tier one and two kind of evolved over the process, the last four years of this plan. And what we mean by that is that tier one projects really are not necessarily more important than tier two. They just have the, they just have more resources behind them. So they either have more planning work done, they have more fully funded, they're just getting closer to being shovel-ready. So that's what we mean by tier one. Tier two are also projects that we looked at through the plan and said, we think it's, you know, it's a viable, it's a, it's a needed project. It's not a pie in the sky kind of project by any means, it's something that's achievable, but it just isn't as far along in development. Maybe it doesn't have all its right away, maybe it doesn't have, maybe it's got partial funding, not full funding. Things like that were the difference between tier one and tier two. This is something I'd like people to take a look at because I think there has been even movement over the, over this pause of what's constituted tier one and tier two. There's been some projects that funding's come along and we moved them up into tier one from tier two. We also list our, our partner agency projects in those tiers because we are funding partners with other agencies. And we, we want to get their input of what they think those projects, what tiers those are in. So lots of opportunity there. And then for projects that were good ideas that came in through our focus groups, through comments, but were, were more expensive projects, more, more regional projects that didn't have funding or, or resources on the horizon. Good projects, well-needed, but we just didn't, weren't able to say, you know, we can put them in a, in a queue. They're ready to queue up and get ready and invest in, they just, we need to, we need to find where those funding sources are going to come from before they can queue up into tier one or tier two, but still good projects that we wanted to memorialize. And then finally, I want to go in a little bit to the projects that will come to us by private development, particularly in the far west of Placer County. So dropping back now to this slide, which are the, the category of improvements within our existing facilities. Loomis Basin Community Park. Loomis Basin Community Park, we've just gone through a retrofit of turf from a hybrid Bermuda that gives more time of use during the year. Also very happy with how some of our field retrofits are happening, using as, as, saving as much as two thirds of the water on our natural, on our natural turf fields. And especially right now, as we go into dry years, that water savings becomes critical. So we're happy about how that's happening. Loomis and Granite Bay have a high desire for new fields. And you can do that by either building new ones or doing things to your field to give more time of use during the day. So I think ultimately we will look at Loomis Basin for lighting, for extending the time of play during the day. Griffith Corey Park up in Penrind, a beautiful little park with a great history to it. If you've never been there before, that really, we were in the middle of just giving a great facelift to and freshening up the interpretive materials there to make it more interesting, more walkable, more sitable and more enjoyable. Forest Hill Park has multiple uses up there from community events to pickleball, which is a rising sport, to improvements around the baseball fields and facilities there. So Forest Hill, we have a subcommittee group that Lisa works with and they have a list of projects up there that we continue to check off the list as we, as, as money becomes available. Bear River Campground, we're working on a water system for infrastructure improvements there for the campground. Partnering with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, it's their property and we manage it. So we have a partner there that we're working with at Bear River. Dutch Flat Pool, if you've never seen, I'll show a slide of in a minute, is a, just a gorgeous little pool up in Dutch Flat. Tremendous location, it's beautiful, well-used, kind of the pride of the community up in Dutch Flat. We've just signed another long-term operating agreement with the volunteer group that helps us with that pool up there. And it also needs a facelift and a new restroom, things like that. Cisco Grove Gould Park, which is right off the freeway in Cisco, great place for a walk, great place for a picnic. We also want to improve the interpretation, the experience, the knowledge of what that was in history. It was, it has also a big history to it. We house the Cisco Grove of Cottonwoods, that is the namesake of Cisco Grove. Likewise, Squaw Valley Park and Sheridan Park, both getting facelifts and, and new amenities for the play that goes on there. So let's go ahead and go to the next slide. This next slide is a pretty quick one, but if you've never been to Dutch Flat Pool, you should. There's a picture of it historically back in the twenties or thirties. This is what it looks like today, shaded, beautiful. We have lifeguards there, starting up Memorial Day weekend and going through Labor Day weekend. We'll go to the next one. So now on to tier one and tier two projects. Hidden Falls Regional Park, I will touch on in a little bit more detail in the next slide. The Granite Bay Sports Fields, we have been working with the Eureka Union School District. Because Granite Bay's number one desire is for additional sports fields, we've been working with the school district to develop some vacant property that they have or underutilized property that they have. Still working with them, they had a bond measure that they were hopeful would support the, some of the, that construction and, and we were going to come along as a partnering, a funding partner with some matching funds. The bond measure didn't pass, so we're back to square one. So we're also, we've been approached by Bayside Church in Granite Bay, who has an interest in, in creating some of their own fields for public use. So we highly support that, because Granite Bay just has a lot of teams with a lot of sports, including new emergent sports, lacrosse, rugby, some of the sports are growing, but none of the other traditional sports, baseball, softball, soccer are receding at all. So they're in, in high need of sports fields and we're looking for those. Sheridan Park, we talked about Dry Creek Park Phase Three in, in West Placer, fully funded through development fees. We're just waiting on, on project management, time availability to be able to work with the community to, to develop what additional amenities they would like on that property out off of Willerda Road. Ofer Creek Side Park is next to the Auburn Ravine in the little town of Ofer, and it is a piece of property the county owns that we'd like to, first and foremost, we've begun to do vegetation management on it. It was a little kind of overgrown, it became a bit of a fire risk, so we went in and really cleaned it up. But also be able to work with that little community to have a place for picnic and a bench and sit next to the, to the Auburn Ravine out there. Skylandia Park, it is a good example of us. We don't do this all by ourselves, by any stretch of the imagination. Skylandia Park's operated by Tahoe City Public Utility District and is one of many projects on our list that our partner agency, that we work with Auburn Recreation District, North Tahoe, Tahoe City Public Utility District, North Star. Might be leaving some out, but that's a sampling of, of projects that they own, they operate, they take pride in. We come alongside as a funding partner for some of those projects and help them get that capital in place. Similar, another great example is exactly North Tahoe Regional Park, operated by North Tahoe Public Utility District. Go on to the next one. And Hidden Falls, I think the slide coming up. Hidden Falls Regional Park is one of the major projects of Placer County, and I think most of you probably on the line even are, are well aware of that. We went through a planning process for the expansion of Hidden Falls. The green, the solid green is open today. The hatched green is what we did an environmental impact report on over the last four years. There was, there were passionate folks on both sides of that project, folks that supported it, folks that had, you know, big issues with it. And the board came to the conclusion about 18 months ago that it would be presumptuous of us to go through, to, to go forward with a master plan, including, that included assumptions about the future of Hidden Falls before we finish that environmental review process. So that's what we did. That's why you haven't seen the master plan out for these months, is because we wanted to get to, to an answer on the Hidden Falls project. And we did on March eighth, the board supervisors did approve a reduced project. So our intent was to go through the entire master plan document and any place that referenced Hidden Falls, we would make consistent with that reduced plan. And I would invite anybody here, we, we did our best, we looked through it, but this is another opportunity. If you see any inconsistencies with, between what we have in the master plan and what was approved, bring that right to our attention. Our full intent is to make sure the master plan is consistent with that approved process, with that project. We will be moving forward. We have been awarded a little over $3 million from the State Natural Resources Agency to develop the Twilight Ride Parking Area, which is where that boxed P is, right below the, the word Kramer Road on the map. And that will allow us to do the first phase of opening to that park. We expect to be under design and construction during the 2019, 22 and, or 2020, 2022 and 2023 and be opening probably toward the end of 2023. That could be off by a year or so, just depending on how design and construction goes. But that's the timeframe we do want folks to know all around. It is not open today. I know the projects had a lot of publicity and we want folks to know, we're going to be working, we're setting up some meetings with folks in the Bell, Kramer, Hubbard, Lone Star neighborhoods to help get word out message that it is not open today. There's sold the only one parking area off Mears Road today. It's going to be a couple of years before anything is out there, even though you may have heard about the project. Still need to use the only, the one and only entrance that's out there today. So that's Hidden Falls, that'll go forward in several phases, the first of which is the Twilight Ride Parking Lot. Move on to the next one, which is Dry Creek Park, I mentioned in far western Placer, right off of Willerda Road. If you've been down there lately, you'll see that there's this great big wonderful new bridge right next to the park off of Willerda Road that now includes separated trail connectivity. So the whole community of West Placer can get underneath the bridge on a trail without having to cross Willerda Road. You can get across the bridge on a separated protected sidewalk. So big improvements for transportation down there and I'll get into how that fits into the trail plan here in a minute. But if you've been out there, you'll see that this, the entirety of this park has not been built. The, the lower right sections, the baseball field and soccer field in the lower right have been built. And a portion of the parking lot has been built and then the playground and little amenities there in the, in the middle have been built. But we have the, the rest of the planning process, we'll be working with the community to see what other amenities we should be putting in there, the additional fields, the additional baseball fields. We'll work with folks down there, we're starting to get more and more league reservations. There's more and more sports teams interested in that park. So we really want to know what to build, make it the best use over the next generation. And that'll start taking place in the next couple of years. Again, we have funding for that project. Let's go to the next one. And then the trails, I think the trail projects often get some of the, the highest attention of all of the projects that we have. And from here, probably a little easier to talk from the next slide, which you did see a little bit ago. It's a repeat of one that if you want to move on to the next one, this is the regional backbone of trails throughout Placer County that we're looking at. And so from here, we'll zoom in a little bit. If you go to the next slide, we'll look at the eastern part of the county. And so here, the multi-agency effort to construct a bikeway all the way around Lake Tahoe. Tahoe City Public Utility District has been a pioneer in that effort ever since the seventies. They've built trail all up and down the west shore of Tahoe and out Highway 89 from Tahoe City to Squaw Valley. The county now has taken up the mantle of some of the project management. North Star Community Service District has taken up the mantle of project management and so has the town of Truckee. And so in addition to the ring around Lake Tahoe, a separated paved trail, we're also working on what we call the resort triangle, which is that blue loop that connects all of the communities in the North Tahoe Truckee area. And then one of Lisa's projects, moving west from there is a, it's a dirt trail, not a paved trail like the blue one, but the Memorial Overland Immigrant Trail takes off from Donner Memorial State Parks. State Park goes over, over Donner Summit and to King Vale. It extends a little bit further than it's shown on this map, but you get the idea there. The alignment goes over in the general area of the original wagon route, not right over the original tracks. We don't want to disturb artifacts, but in the general area, to give people that experience of the original wagon routes over, over Donner Summit. And I'll talk about that, the extension of that as well, if we go forward. Actually, can you go backwards one, one slide? So here you'll, you'll be able to see in the green, right from where the word Truckee through the word Donner. That's the Overland Immigrant Trail. And then you'll see moving to the west in longer range planning. The immigrant trail from King Vale to Donner Lake is in, in phase construction right now. When you go west of King Vale, that becomes a longer range planning project. But one of the big ideas of this plan that emerged out of it was at least one dirt trail connecting east and west Placer that would be an alternative to the Western States Trail along the I-80 corridor. So you'll see a couple of green lines going east to west, one down the Bear River Corridor, one between the I, Interstate 80 and the rim of the, the North Fork American River Canyon. Very corridor level, very, not too much planning done, but a lot of interest in having an alternative to the Western States Trail with multiple accesses off of I-80. You'll also see a dotted black line going roughly from Alta up through the immigrant gap Cisco area. One of the features of this plan is that it is coordinated with the bicycle plans of both the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency and the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. Those two agencies tend to do more planning of roadside trails. So those would be the bike lanes striped into the road itself, where we do more planning of trails outside of roads, off-road trails, whether they're dirt or, or separated paved. But we coordinate with one another. So one of the things we discovered is that Placer County Transportation Planning Agency's plan looked at roadside trails connecting all the way from Roseville up to Truckee, with the exception of a 16-mile stretch between roughly Alta or Baxter and Cisco Grove. So if in the future, we can connect that, that was the one place in the entire east to west county alignment that if you could get a separated paved trail, you would have either roadside or separated paved bikeway from Roseville all the way to Tahoe. So that was the gap that we wanted to begin the planning process on. So from there, let's go on, let's skip two slides and we'll zoom in then down in the west Placer. The other major initiative or major regional loop trail, maybe I went a little too quick, because the loop trail begins with the American River Bikeway that goes from Discovery Park today, all the way up to Folsom Lake, well-used trail. And then Sacramento County is working on another leg of that from Gibson Ranch in Rio Linda or Del Paso, all the way down back to the Discovery Park. So Placer County and City of Roseville are working on the connection through Placer County. So private development projects coming along through West Placer have already built parts of the trail. The Placer Vineyards Development will build a section from Watt Avenue down to Gibson Ranch. And the Reola Vineyards Project just built another couple of miles of that trail in West Placer this year that'll be open to the public beginning next year or later this fall. City of Roseville is working on sections through their jurisdiction. And probably the trickiest in my mind of all of the final connections to make that regional loop is through the community of Granite Bay. But we are looking, you know, actively at, at good alternatives. We're working with, with adjacent agencies and intend during the life of this plan to make that connection through Granite Bay, so that becomes a total regional loop. Then in the far west part of the corner of the county, rather, if you're familiar with the Placer County Conservation Plan that was recently adopted, it is a plan that will form a joint powers authority between City of Lincoln and Placer County that will preserve up to 50,000 acres of habitat land in West Placer in, in kind of offset of the, the major residential development areas in West Placer. That's a plan, that's a 50-year plan. We looked at this possibility, the probability that if some of that land is going to come into public conservation easement, that the public would have an interest in walking on at least a part of that. And so we worked with the process, the Placer County Conservation Plan process. And those lines that you see, black and green for the far west part of the county, connecting to Placer Vineyards, going up through the Auburn Ravine watershed and the Raccoon Creek watershed, are looking at that, at those reserved lands over the next 50 years in the Placer County Conservation Plan and merely saying that somewhere in there, we'd like to find a corridor, very preliminary alignments. In fact, I think one of the things that we may be more clear about in a future draft is not to make it look like they are as set and alignment as they look like on this map. We would have to be very flexible in where those alignments would go, because we always work with willing sellers, willing owners, we're always, we want to be cognizant of the surroundings. And so we don't mean to imply that we're going through anyone's particular property. I know we had comments from folks that have a shooting range out there concerned that it looked like it would be, you know, within unsafe distance of their shooting range. Perfectly fair question, that's not what we intend. We're really just trying to mark out corridors. So let's, let's go on to the next one. And as we finish up, I just want to draw folks' attention, even though the backbone trails were, were, were showing big, you know, large-scale regional backbone trails, we have blowups. You can go to your community, your neighborhood, look at the maps and the appendices of the document. They're all available right there on the view document box from, on plasterparksplan.com. I believe it's appendix D, if I'm not mistaken, has all of these blown-up maps that get down to the level of neighborhood planning. These are alignments that are generally consistent with their respective community plans that have gone through processes in Granite Bay, 2012, some of them quite a bit older than that, and working with trail groups of what alignments will still be viable going into the future. So I won't dwell on any of these particular alignments. I just want you to know, these are available, the maps are there. Look at the areas of the county that you're interested in, you'll find up, you'll find blown-up maps with much more detail. We'll move on. As we wrap up here, I talked a little bit earlier about some of the aspirational projects. And again, take a look through these, these are the ones that we believe are really good, good ideas. They just don't have the, the level of funding on the foreseeable future for us to, to bring them up into the tier one, tier two projects. And then finally, I wanted to spend a little bit of time on the, on the private development projects. We'll go one map further to the very end there. With the major developments in unincorporated West Placer, go ahead and go, there we go, that one. Each of those plans developed as a specific plan comes self-contained with, with, with triggers for development of parks, development of trails and preservation of open space that come with fee programs for development and special taxes for maintenance. So these become kind of self-contained. They, when they come online and they develop out, they are not a draw in the county general fund, because they come fully funded for their park and recreation programming. But you will see these developments, a little further east, that's covered up by the legend. Bickford Ranch as well will have an 11-mile dirt, dirt trail system and a similar length of, of separated class one trail system. Those mileage might be a little off, but a good robust trail system of loops through that development. And you can see Placer Vineyards, for example, all of those black lines add up to 30 miles. And you can see Placer Vineyards, for example, all of those black lines add up to thirty miles of trail. The yellow areas are preserved wetlands that will be in public ownership with trails through the middle of them. The green uh, areas are your community plant, your community parks. Uh, so all of that comes uh, as they develop over probably the next thirty years. They come with fully developed parks and trails and funding mechanisms. So with that, and I'll, and I'll mention too, just in closing, uh, Placer Vineyards will have its own governing recreation district that will come into existence July first. Called the Placer Vineyards Park and Recreation uh, District. It will be managed uh, all over time, similar to our other recreation districts, like Auburn Recreation District with its own board. It will begin life governed by the Board of Supervisors and staffed by county staff in its inner, in its, in its initial years until there's enough of a representative population out there to make its own, to, to vote for its own board members and make its own decisions. But that district will serve recreational needs in West Placer particularly because it will have more urbanized development. It will include things like recreation centers, aquatic centers, things like that with recreation programming that Placer County as an agency doesn't run today. So it'll have that district to serve recreation needs west of Highway sixty-five, north of Highway eighty. With that, um, I will, I'll go ahead and wrap up. And let me uh, let me see, maybe if I can put Stephanie back on the spot for just a minute to think of anything I may have left off as I kind of scan through some of these, some of these questions and will take a, take a minute and then answer some questions.
Yeah, and I think there was a hand raised, Tom, if you could, if you could add your question to the Q and A box. As we sort through these, that would be great. And I think Lisa's been answering some of the more specific questions in the answered box.
We do have one question asking if this meeting will be recorded and it is being recorded. And Andy or Stephanie, do you want to say what it, when the recording would be available?
I will say it's probably going to be available by Monday, I would say, but it will be on the Placer Parks Plan uh, dot com website, we'll have it posted there.
Okay, um, then maybe this one, Andy, you can take this one. Uh, gentleman David needs to leave by seven and he was asking if um, he was asking if the homeless population will be addressed, if that's addressed in the plan and its impact on the trails and the parks.
So let me, I, I'm going to ask, there's some elements of this question, I think, in, in, in several of the questions that I want to ask or that I want to answer broadly and then focus down to the project level. So broadly, when we began this process, we thought of it as about a ten-year plan. We've really kind of moved out that aspiration to what we're now calling a twenty-year plan, not intended to be specifically twenty years to the day, but looking generally at the growth rate in Placer County that we would pace development of these projects and this new inventory generally along the pace um, of, of new development. So as population rise happens in Placer County, there is a certain kind of a tide rise of all services. So uh, fire protection, police protection, uh, utilities, transportation, those things rise together and, and so we we're putting together a plan that we believe kind of mirrors that, that uh, that tide rise of all population and services that go with it. So in other words, not trying to bring a lot of inventory on all at one time that stresses the entire system so that there is additional, you know, protective services, public safety services, those kind of things that are generally paced along the same way that, that this plan comes about over time. So it's developed in proportion to the population. That's a broad overall answer, then it gets down to the project level. This plan is not intended to be environmental review, it's not intended to be the design project level review for any of the projects listed. It's a, it's a general roadmap out into the future. Um, it gives staff, presuming it's adopted the way it is, there's still hearing bodies to go through, there's still vetting to be done. But in the form that it's adopted, the intent is that it gives staff the impetus to begin to go out and look for funding. Uh, this, the impetus to begin the planning process, but each project in here, just as Hidden Falls went through its own, uh, the expansion project went through its own environmental impact report and looked at each of these issues about public safety, about homelessness. Um, it will look at each of those at the project level. It will include specifically the, the staff input from public safety, from, from fire. Um, and what the impacts are and what the mitigations for those projects are on a project level. So um, that's how I, that's how I would answer the questions, I think both uh, pertaining, the first question had to do with what about injuries along the trail system? The second one of, about uh, what about the homeless population? And I think the answers are similar. Um, and in particular, each project goes through its own individual review with the input of the, the particular staff from those agencies.
Yeah, and I think there's a number of questions about timeframe too, and I think you did a, a nice job sort of setting the stage for that, Andy, that you know, this is a twenty-year plan, we have identified what's in planning process for those tier-one projects. There are some specific questions on different areas, you know, there's definitely, you know, a lot of effort uh, in the, in different areas to be able to get those uh, paved trail loop systems, uh, the question for the system around Lake Tahoe, you know, there's again, really in-depth planning going on for each of those elements, um, and each of them also has segments that are uh, trying to chunk off to get some short-term wins while thinking about some of the, the more challenging sections to complete. Would you add anything else to the, the tier-one piece? Andy, for timeframe?
Uh, off the top of my head, I'll uh, let me give a little thought to that as we
Yeah, I know on the east shore of Lake Tahoe, there's uh, you know, they're looking at the second phase from, you know, they went to uh, Sand Harbor uh, last year, so looking at that next phase around the east shore. And there's in-depth planning on the west shore as well. Um, and then I think really for Placer, it's about that tri- uh, the triangle as well.
Yeah, um, yeah, I'll chime in now that my attention went back from scanning comments to this particular issue of the trail around the, the resort triangle. So we do expect to uh, we're, we're just about to receive the final right-of-way that we need on the portion of the resort triangle from Town of Truckee to North Star. So we'll, uh, we're going to start construction on a section of that this year. Uh, we expect to have, within the next two years, hopefully, have complete connectivity between Town of Truckee and North Star Drive. On, on that segment, we also, our Tahoe Engineering Office is working on planning from the section between uh, Dollar Hill and North Tahoe Regional Park. So that'll be a big link probably in a couple of phases, not just one. Uh, likewise, and I did see a question here specific to the Highway eighty-nine corridor trail, that would be the one from um, Squaw Valley Road to Town of Truckee. And uh, that, that's one of those that I think we're going to need to, I, I don't want to answer in too much detail because um, our office is not um, the lead project manager on that project, but the Tahoe Engineering Office is. They're beginning to have uh, public workshops, it's just starting into the public review uh, publicly, environmental review process. So uh, there will be additional, uh, plenty of additional public comment opportunities on that particular section of trail along Highway eighty-nine. Uh, I see concerns here about uh, proximity to property and things like that. Um, I know pro, you know, the project management staff is happy to talk to folks. And if you need connectivity to those project management staffs, uh, folks, follow up in your, your question here, we can link you up with those folks that are in tune with that project in a detailed level.
There was a question about the, sticking on the timeframe question, uh, sort of theme about the process just for this plan and the, and the approval of the master plan. So the, the idea is that we're um, you know, reintroducing the master plan at this, at this meeting, the thirty-day comment uh, period that is, is open for people to, again, re-acquaint yourself with the, the project. Um, as, along with that, in tandem, as you're providing your uh, re-review and comments, we are, as Andy said, diving into those maps and those numbers and seeing what, you know, needs to uh, what progress has been made in the last year and a half, which is actually sort of exciting to see that things have, have been moving forward. We'll be updating those and the plan is that hopefully in July, um, so we have the thirty-day comment period. Um, depending on the level of comments, if we feel like we need to, you know, take a pause and re uh, go through public uh, public input, we, we could do that. But we're hoping that the, the comments are fairly straightforward with the processes that we've put in place. Um, that we pick up those comments, get back to the parks commission and then to, by uh, July, get to the supervisors. Did I describe that fairly accurately, Andy?
You did, yes. So given everybody an opportunity in their areas of interest to give us that input before we go back to any hearing bodies and there will be another edited plan uh, with all of these comments um, taken into consideration, right? So timeframe-wise, um, potentially Parks Commission in July, not cast in stone, but potentially. And that would be to the Board of Supervisors then and kind of the August, September range. Don't quote us on that, that's just kind of the crystal ball we're looking at right now. Depending on the comments we get, depending on the meetings we have with folks, that could, that could extend. Wouldn't be any shorter, we're not going to go to the Parks Commission any sooner than July. Um, but we'll just see what kind of input we get. I see down there at the bottom, uh, was our plan coordinated with the trail plans of the cities?
I would say yes. We, we pulled the uh, the city plans, um, and again, that's one of those things that have, they've been updating their pu- you know, plans and actually getting things built. You know, that's one of those uh, in continual updated mapping pieces. Uh, but we also updated it all with, you know, the specific plans that have been uh, approved with the different community plans and area plans and then each agency's plans as well. So uh, Auburn State Recreation Area, for example, they recently completed their general plan, um, general management plan update. So we are actively incorporating that updated information into this plan as well. So it's all reflective and coordinated.
See two questions in here related to e-bikes and um, I don't know, policies related to e-bikes on trails and paved trails. Um, you know, if either one of you are able to address e-bike policies or how those, that's being addressed?
Sure, I'll take that one on. Uh, so we do intend um, to take it as a policy, both a study. So our Parks Commission directed staff to go out and, and look at the legal landscape around e-bikes right now. So what are the, what are the federal and state policies around e-bikes? Uh, and laws around e-bikes? And then come back to the Parks Commission um, with recommendations for them to consider uh, on, on our own e-bike policy. So we are in tune with, with what other agencies are doing. Uh, you know, they are a very emergent, um, popularizing, getting very popular on a lot of trails, so we do understand it's not uh, something that can be s- uh, sidestepped. We need to really look into it, uh, form our own policies. Um, so that's our, what we will be doing. Uh, timeframe-wise, hard to say, I would say uh, maybe here, if you'd like to, um, it, it probably not too early to start making up a list of folks who are interested in e-bikes and we can let you know. If you'll, if you leave your address here, we'll start making up a contact list of when we intend to go back to our, our uh, Park Commission and work through policy on e-bikes.
There's another question here, is there consideration of coordinating the plan with hazardous risk mitigation planning? Especially related to wildfires, um, I'm sorry, the question just moved for me. Can this sort of coordinated planning help facilitate implementation of this plan?
Yeah, I know
County actually just hired a
Yeah.
Uh, regional wildfire coordinator. So we are looking at projects now more on a, on a regional basis. Uh, we're also, Placer County, by the way, we're, we're launching into a program to, to look at all of our properties, not just parks. Um, Placer County owns about four hundred properties throughout the county, throughout unincorporated Placer County. And uh, when it comes to wildfire, it's, it's somewhat irrelevant whether they're parks or any other type of property. So we're looking at all of those properties in what it takes to get into compliance with our own codes for defensible space and shaded fuel breaks, things like that. Um, we're finishing up that study now and uh, looks like we'll be able to launch into uh, a program of treating all of those properties as well as starting to work with adjacent um, agencies and property owners um, to start doing um, county-wide, property-wide kind of landscape-level fire planning.
Then there's a couple of questions about specific trail alignments, uh, Andy and Stephanie, are those in the appendix that we can point people to? Or, you know, should we discuss those specific suggestions right now in the Q and A on specific trail alignments?
I'm looking at one, for example, that says it would be possible to like uh, to link Miners Ravine Trail with Pori Trail. And off the top of my head, I think that's one I'd have to go offline, feel free to reach out individually um, to us and, and let's connect offline and, and I'd have to kind of look over the maps and, and uh, do a little study of that to answer it.
Yeah, and, and to that end, that, you know, I don't know, Ben, if you're able to put my email or Andy's, Andy's email in the Q and A box for people to reach out on some of those specific questions? And yeah, we can make sure to, to walk through the maps. The, the, as Andy got the appendix right, appendix B is the enlarged um, community map. So it goes community by community across the entire county at a really enlarged scale. There's also a series of regional maps and then the countywide maps. So if you wanted to look at it sort of regionally and see where those connections are coming up and then um, dive in a little bit more specifically into the enlarged maps, you can do that in appendix B regionally and then appendix D uh, really enlarged.
See a question there from Metavista, does the process allow the ability to add trails or is that window closed? The window is not closed. Uh, we still are taking comments and, and advice uh, right now for the next thirty days. I will say in, in communities that have a, a, a well-established trail group like uh, Metavista Trails Association, uh, we do work with them uh, in vetting trails. Um, so that's probably, you know, I, I would encourage you, if you're in Metavista or Loomis, to work through your local um, trail groups. But absolutely, the question is, yes, we are still taking input.
Then to that
See another question about Highway eighty-nine, uh, the trail along Highway eighty-nine, and I think that answer uh, we're going to take, take those questions particularly about that trail, the Highway eighty-nine uh, Truckee River Access Trail from Squaw Valley to Truckee. And we need to link those folks up with the project managers and, and have the offline discussions in detail about that one.
Um, there's one question here about, I think this um, refers to a recent recent project or recent um, happening with state parks in the area, but about bulldozing local spots that have been used for jumps by youth. And if there are other plans for off-road mountain bike parks and trails in this, um, I know the Auburn Bike Park was part of this plan that was recently completed. Um, I guess other considerations for that as well, in addition to the Auburn Bike Park that are included in the plan?
Our plan does not include uh, specifically skills courses, pump tracks. Those kind of things have not been included in our plan until now. If those are some of your ideas, we're happy to hear them, but we have not included those in our plan. And I see another interesting question here, the properties we just talked about, the ones that aren't currently po- parks, can they be used by the public for recreation or are they open space? Um, if we touch them to do fuel reduction, I, that does not automatically make them parks or anything like that. Some of them remain in whatever status they're in now, some of them are pieces of land that were given over to the county after Caltrans finished a project. I mean, all kinds of projects and all kinds of status. We don't intend to turn them into parks or change any kind of status of them, just because we're doing fuel load on them. Um, they would remain in whatever status they are today, just clearer and more fire-safe.
Then another one here, um, someone who lives in Meto Vista area and they want to allow the ability to add trails in the master plan. So again, I'm going to um, add both your email addresses to um, add both your email addresses to, to Jeff for that one. Is that right?
Yeah, that, that sounds correct.
Um, and then this one to wildfires are now a major concern across the Western US. Um, has there been studies on the efficiency of building new multi-use trails and the effect that can be si, can be considered to be used as fire breaks? And is that included in the plan as well?
Yeah, that was an issue that came up during the Hidden Falls, uh, discussion, and we've, you know, gotten some testimony from CAL FIRE to the effect that the, that, you know, anytime you're clearing brush and, and bare ground, you have that opportunity, at least incrementally, that that helps with fire, uh, reduction. In terms of, uh, large-scale studies of, of how that's happened, I, uh, I'm not aware of large-scale studies. If you have any in mind, pass them along.
Yeah, absolutely. There is a question about the, the recognition of the, you know, the large areas of public lands that aren't counties, that, you know, there's forest lands, state parks, and then all those other open space lands that really help create that, uh, quality of life for Placer County. There is a, in chat, in the inventory existing conditions chapter, we do talk about the, the role of those, those lands and the, and also the resources that they provide. Um, we can take another look at those as well and, and think about I, the, the role that, um, you know, indigenous people play, but, um, we can also make sure to, to make sure that that's hitting on that point too. Um, good comment that, you know, those lands really do create and help the county provide, um, lots of great open spaces, uh, both for just viewshed corridors and, and habitat, but then also for recreation too.
And I, I think also want to, looking at Michael Garabedian's comment here about the, the role of open space, natural resources and so forth, which is a good comment. Um, and I, and I just want to say generally that, you know, while our park and trail master plan is expansive, it doesn't cover the field of everything that the county is doing. You know, we also have the Placer County Conservation Plan, it looks specifically at landscape-level conservation, the Placer Legacy Programs. There really are all kinds of things going on. Uh, fire planning now, uh, with the Office of Emergency Services, the Agriculture Office and, and parks altogether, looking at wildfire planning on a more landscape level. Um, so just because it's not covered in the park and trail master plan doesn't necessarily mean the county's not intimately involved in it one way or another. See a question there, a good question. Roseville has a special set of rules regarding which side of the paved trail is used by which type of user. Um, I do expect that these are the kinds of things that we are going to need to, um, to process, to, uh, to vet through our park commission and ultimately maybe the board. And maybe in more than one geographic area, because the setting in Tahoe may be different than the setting in Roseville. When we are working with trails in Tahoe, you're working with multiple federal and state agencies who all have their way of doing things. And when we were in Roseville, there might be another set. So it may be that we have to, to look at different policies, different legends, different road markings, different signage, those kinds of things in a few different areas throughout the county. We don't want to have different, you know, you want to be as consistent as you can, but there could be some, some, some large areas at least that may have to be looked at differently just because of the agencies involved.
And for the pub, the public right-of-way easements for trellis and canals, you know, there's, there's, that comment actually, um, refers back to some recommendations in one of the community plans, I believe, that we looked at too. And we tried to make sure that we, we connect those as stakeholders as well moving forward as, as we get into more project-level, uh, designs for some of those, you know, corridor connections that, that Andy spoke about, the, the role that those those locations might play in terms of being able to provide trail connectivity.
Let's see, what do we, a couple more questions about Highway eighty-nine that I think are, are statements there about getting in contact, getting, getting communication. So those are noted. Uh, we will reach out, make sure that the, the Kansas and the project management team up there gets these comments about Highway eighty-nine. Uh, Michael follows up. What does the plan provide for county development decisions that negatively visually and fire hazard-wise impact Auburn State Rec area? Uh, we don't address it directly. I mean, those are kind of zoning, um, level questions, and, and our park and trail master plan really does not attempt to affect zoning. So it looks like questions are slowing down. I think we'll stay on here for another five. Nothing, if, if questions keep coming, we'll stay longer, but, uh, well, at least, uh, if anybody's gathering their thoughts into some final questions, we'll stay on for another five minutes or so. I really want to thank folks for being here tonight. Um, I'm always honored when this many people, I think I counted up to seventy-five folks, uh, when that many people are willing to give up an evening to listen in on what we're doing and take an interest. I, that's just a really great thing. Please do get involved. We really want your eyes on the plan. We want to make it right. We want to make corrections if we need to. We want your ideas. So thank you again for being here tonight.
Andy, I don't know if you want to remind Tom on the attendee list, he still has his hand up, if he wants to type his question into the Q and A, if he, or if he just wants to lower his hand if his, what he's been answered.
Tom, did you hear that?
Oh, he turned it down.
Okay, all right. Amber, good comment about native plants. We are looking at design standards as a, kind of a follow-up document to this, uh, plan, so that's well noted.
And we do talk about, yeah, trying to have lower maintenance, uh, landscaping, and I think that, that definitely ties along as well in the ecological aspect. Great comment. Thanks, James.
Michael follows up with a question of a community, oh, go ahead, sorry, I overruled.
Oh, no, I was just saying, thanking people for thanking us.
Michael asks if a community wants a park, what is the process for them? Uh, generally starts, uh, it could start with an informal conversation. It can start with often a trip to the Municipal Advisory, uh, Council, uh, to start bringing it into the attention of, uh, you know, that's the place where a lot of community-wide, um, input happens. It's where momentum for projects gets built. Uh, so that's a great place to start. Um, staff gets involved with, and then I, there's, of course, the devil's in the details. What are the, you know, there's the wants, and then there's the practicality. Is there, is there property? Is there funding? So, so a lot, a lot of times, uh, like in the case of Granite Bay, began planning for their parks and expressing their desires uh, back in the mid nineteen, uh, you know, around nineteen ninety-five. Uh, five years later, they were able to pass an assessment for themselves. Twenty years later, they were be, they were able to build out the parks that they wanted to the service level standard to the rest of the county. So it's not a short process. If you want to park in your community, uh, it generally takes a fair amount of, you know, a lot of years, decade or more in some cases, to get that momentum and the practical, uh, feasibility in that ca, you know, in that case, just Granite Bay as a test case. We went out and did feasibility study of what property is available, um, how suitable is it, um, did a ranking of the properties that were available, priority ranking. Uh, the, the Municipal Advisory Committee set up a, uh, special subcommittee, uh, to look at, um, to, to help Shepherd Parks through a process and, and get them there. So you see all those elements. It's, it's not a small deal to get a park in your community. Uh, but it can be done, and I, Granite Bay is just one of the communities that's shown how it can be done. Squaw Valley's another community. Applegate, another one.
And I will echo Andy's recommendation. If you have not visited the Dutch Flat Pool, it is quite a treat. A great place, great location.
Don't all seventy-five of you go at once? Well, another couple of minutes here, um, kind of a going once. All right. Well, I think we can wrap it up. Um, there are, if you think of anything later, you can go to the Placer Parks Plan site. There is a place for comments there. We can still get back to you. Again, just the beginning of the rollout of this, uh, public review. Uh, just want to get people reacquainted with it. I'm honored that seventy-five of you are willing to be here tonight. So we'll go ahead and close up and, uh, enjoy the rest of your evening.